Members, it's now the appointed time and we have a quorum, so the meeting is called to order. So please return to your seats. Members, it's now the appointed time and we already have a quorum, so the meeting is called to order. For the special meeting today, we are scheduled to finish at twelve noon, but if necessary, I shall extend the meeting by no more than fifteen minutes. According to the rules of procedure, section five of annex one of the F C, for members who've just joined the F C before the meeting committee, within one month, members who've just been elected to the political may apply to join the F C. Mister Ho King Hong, Mister Sheng Hui Long, and Mister Chen Wing Kong have already followed the procedure and indicated that they would like to join the F C. They may therefore now attend our meeting today as members of the F C and also participate in the voting. Also like to remind members that regarding the matters to be dealt with today, should you have any direct or indirect peculiar interest, please declare your interest accordingly pursuant to section eighty-three A of the rules of procedure. I also to remind you to section eighty-four of the rules of procedure, that is, at the time of voting, when you have any direct peculiar interest. Before the meeting, I'd like to declare that I'm a non-executive director of the Wolf Holdings Company Limited. I think we already started discussing this item at the last meeting, and this the item invites members to approve the paper P W S C twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, thirty-two, which proposes to upgrade project three-five-nine E P, that is, the construction of a thirty-room classroom primary school at Ling Ching Road, Sam Chee Road, at an estimated cost of four hundred and fifty-three million point three million dollars in money of the day prices. Attending our meeting today, we have Mister J F C, Under Secretary of Education, Miss Wendy Leng, Deputy Director of Education, Mister Frankie Wong, Project Director, Mister Ambrose Wong, Senior Project Manager. Eight members already line up to indicated that they would like to speak, and we have Mister Quatling Lee and Mister Sarah Lee, you know, waiting for the second round to speak. We didn't have enough time at the last meeting, and some members have indicated they would give up the right to speak. The secretariat has already indicated that you have now reserved your right to speak. Since we have scheduled this extra meeting, I will retain them on the list. Others who would like to speak, please also press the button indicate that you intend to speak. I will now first of all invite Reverend Ken and Koon to speak. Chairman, at the last meeting, I didn't really have any questions to raise. I just want to make a comment, and therefore I said that I would like to waive my right to speak. So today I'm going to express my opinion. I think the issue today is whether or not this application is reasonable. As a member of a school sponsoring body, I think there are several factors we need to consider. First of all, the intention of the sponsoring body. It is not the case that all sponsoring bodies would like to relocate their school to another district. The sponsor body would need to make a commitment. We're not just talking about funding from government. The sponsoring body also has to contribute. Likewise, for headquarters, not all headmasters would like, would prefer relocation. Thirdly, among the members of the sponsoring body and within the team, I think relocation is no simple matter. In the organization I serve, we have the similar experience. To really relocate a school, the whole plan involves many issues, and also we need to consult the stakeholders. Simply put, I think in this application, every school should, would need to mobilize a lot of resource, human and other resources. My past experiences show that there have been successful and unsuccessful cases. I believe that the team at the Education Bureau would have assessed the situation in the school, the intention of the school, and the various factors involved. For this particular school, this is really a matchbox-style school building, which is substandard in design. I've also noticed that some members have pointed out that there are other schools in even worse condition. Well, depending on the intention and their capacity. Now, since this project, I think we are proposing to, the project, the proposal involves three schools, two of which have already been approved. So I don't see any reason, unless members think that the four hundred million dollars is too expensive, otherwise I think I would support the proposal. I note that members have asked other questions, but at the discussion of the education panel and the papers that I've read, I understand that members don't have any strong views. So I hope that other members would also support the proposed relocation, so that among the students, I believe that the interest of the students, especially over the past period of time since two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two, they really would like to be relocated to the new school campus, so that they have a new learning environment and that they'll be able to have a better learning environment. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Koon, sharing with us his past experience. Do we need any officials to respond? Well, it depends whether the officials would like to respond. Under Secretary. Good morning, Chairman and Members. I'm grateful to the F C for scheduling this extra meeting. I thank Mister Reverend Koon for his comments and suggestions. In the school allocation exercise, different sponsoring bodies and stakeholders of the schools would have their own considerations. In the past, we have seen some school buildings, although they are rather, you know, you know, traditional or substantial, they have not applied for relocation. For this application for relocation, so that they can, you know, fight for a better learning environment, I think this is a pragmatic spirit on the part of the school. The teachers and the students and the parents are also looking forward to the relocating school to Sam Chee Po and moving into the new campus, and I thank Mister Koon for his support for this project. Mister Koon, any follow-up? No. Next, Miss Chen Hoi Yan. Thank you. At the last meeting, in the last meeting, the secretary have already answered the question. After Mister Koon has spoken, I'd like to follow up. First of all, regarding the Kichu Chiu school building, it is also a matchbox, you know, type of school building, and the F C had to decide whether or not we should support the proposed allocation. And we have to consider whether or not the facilities in the school, in that school, is appropriate. Well, we're now applying for this project funding for four hundred million dollars. Our education policy has changed recently. We've changed to STEM education. Now, for this school in Sam Chee Po, I think they put in the application in the twenty-ten something. And in the policy address, this year, the facilities in this school, they tailor-made for the, to cater to the interests of students, or said that upon completion, they may not be able to catch up with the needs of the current education policy. Secondly, the secretary said that different members believe that relocating the school to a different district may result in under-allocation of school places in any particular district. Now, this is a territory-wide issue. With different schools located in different districts, which have such, you know, you know, dissatisfaction. So is that a thorny issue for the Education Bureau? And if so, for schools applying to relocate to a different district, it's going to be more difficult. How are we going to address that? Under Secretary, two questions. First of all, thank you for those two questions. As, for example, it is indeed, the school of the Father Kichu Chiu School is very small. Many of the schools, they don't have A V rooms, language labs, music room, conference room, guidance room, basketball court, multipurpose courts, and the computer-aided learning school. All these facilities are lacking in that school, and this has really restricted the education in that school. Whereas in the new campus here, there definitely will be better facilities and more space for the school that based on the school-based curriculum, you know, promote their education. Members refer to STEAM and STEM education. In the Kichu Chiu School, there is also, there also are plans that they would develop STEAM education. In the design of the campus, we have been in close liaison with the school authorities, and in the school itself, there are multipurpose teaching rooms, which in future can be turned into special STEAM education room. The question, the next question is about the declining student population over the territory. Now, this is indeed a structural question. Throughout Hong Kong, we have seen in Hong Kong, there is a drop in the student population. Whereas in net forty, Sam Chee Po, as we indicated at the meeting last Friday, that for this school net, it's not true the case that all the schools have gone for opted for small-class teaching, only fifty-seven schools have done that, and this is the lowest percentage among the other districts. So going forward, after the school has relocated from Kwai Cheng to Sam Chee Po, it will increase the number of classrooms in that net and provide favorable conditions for introducing small-class teaching in that district. Thank you. Mister Lang Wen Kit? Thank you. Regarding relocating the school across the district, I have some views. Moving the school from Chang Ching Estate to Sam Chee Po, would that be the best interest of the students? I think as student, if you need to travel to a different district, it's going to be very, you know, strenuous exercise. Now, of course, you want, you say you want to take care of the students in Sam Chee Po, but for the students, you know, studying in the Father Kichu Chiu School, have you considered the interest of the students in that school? Not everyone can afford to pay for the school bus. Is it that we want them to travel all the way from Chang Ching Estate to Sam Chee Po? Have you considered relocation in Situ? These are the options that you need to consider. I think the whole issue arises from problems with your allocation of school, you know. For example, my school from Chuk Yuen, moving from Chuk Yuen to Kai Tech. I said last time that there is no M T R or bus, you know, connection from Chuk Yuen to Kai Tech. How can you expect the Kai Fongs to travel from Chuk Yuen to Kai Tech? Have you thought of the interest of the students? You may say, Under Secretary, that if all the students go to Calhoun City, then schools in Calhoun City don't have to worry about, you know, not being able to, you know, recruit sufficient number of students. Now, so for all the matchbox schools in Calhoun City, is that the case that you don't have to improve the conditions for Lam Hung Chan and Ling Kwong? All these schools are also in pretty bad shape. Have you not considered the need to help them? Is it that they don't need such assistance? In Calhoun City, there are schools which have failed to recruit sufficient number of students, same in Sam Chee Po. Have you thought of helping them? Whether a school can, you know, attract enough students depend on, you know, whether or not, you know, you have a good sponsoring body. There are some schools in remote areas where there are people queuing up, applying for admission. You say this is a structural issue. You said that in Calhoun City, I think, won't I say, you know, admit some of the students in Calhoun City? Can you do the same to resolve the issue? You have to actually think out of the box. Like Tin Tong Primary School, Doremo School, it's on top of, you know, Chuk Yuen, and you have the Wang Tai, the Wang Tai Sin, you know, government school. You've scrapped that school, so you can remove the school there, so the students have to go to Kai Tech. Do you need to be so rigid and say that in some district, there is, you know, insufficient number of students, and therefore you want to relocate other schools to move into that district? We've scrapped so many schools, including secondary schools. Have you considered using the school campuses, such school premises for relocation? You say you cannot implement small-class teaching in primary schools. Why can't we do it in, you making use of some, you know, very consecutive school premises?
We need to give it some serious thought, the topic we're talking about. And Reverend Quinn said the topic was endorsed, and I'm sure this one will. But we need to think about how can we allocate these school premises in a better manner? Otherwise, how can we use these schools, resize the schools? You said that the four million dollars were wasted. I think it's true. In Shen Shipu, there are a lot of other community primary schools which are even smaller. Why are you not lending us a helping hand? Well, I'm very disappointed because not sure what the principle is. Mister Young, your question, there were other members that shared your question in the Friday meeting. I think this question should be deferred to the Education Panel for further discussion, not here. But I support your comment. Deputy Secretary, do you have, Under Secretary, do you have any comment?
Well, simply put, I would say this project is really in need because it doesn't only improve the matchbox school premises, giving the students a better environment, but at the same time, it can also rationalize the supply and demand, the imbalance across different districts. In Shen Shipu school net, more schools could be created for small-class teaching. But we've also heard that members in this meeting and in the Friday meeting voiced the concerns for a cross-district re-provisioning. So we will come back and think about when it comes to reallocation of school premises, whether the same approach should be taken or other approaches should be taken. Thank you, Chairman. Next, Mister Deng Fei.
Thank you, Chairman. We received a letter from the Federation of Educational Workers because it involves complicated matters. Mister Young mentioned what principles should be applied in reallocating school premises. Should we see, should we see that the school is a matchbox school, or should we use new premises? Or should we take other approaches to solving the problem of no enough spaces? I think some other districts could be used for solving the enrollment problems. But at this point, this relates to the Finance Committee's work because it involves four hundred million. If the school is moved to a district where we have a lot of students, but it ends up having no students or not enough students, then the other school who moved out of the district will also face an enrollment problem. Then, this four hundred million dollars is not spent properly. It's a very important question. When we move school to a different district, have we thought about the adequate student enrollment in the new district? This is an essential problem. How does Education Bureau estimate the number of students enrolling every district? At present, we're just looking at the public housing, private properties, the number of units in order to extrapolate the number of a student enrollment. But with the schools having the right to choose where they're moving into, it looks rational at face value, but the students have a lot of options. Probably, they will not move to a school close by, or they will move to a different district, or they will move to international private schools, not necessarily in a government-funded school. So in this situation, if we are just looking at the number of residents in the community in order to give an estimate of how many students there will be, it's a static number. So I believe the government will change its approach in estimating the potential prospective students in the future because we need to think about the impact from the independent rate of the parents in choosing schools for their children. So when we are applying for funding from the Finance Committee, I think if we're talking about four hundred million per school, then a new approach would serve the purpose better. It's not that we've moved to a new school in a new district, and then later the school will be closed again. Under Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Deng, for the comments. Well, we've read the letter addressed to this committee from the Federation of Education Workers. Actually, I agree that in the future, we should look at what a better approach could be applied in estimating prospective students. But the challenge is very big. As the members rightly put, the parents have the right to choose schools for their children. In Hong Kong, sometimes we think about the convenience of transport network. A lot of times, we read media reports saying that some popular schools received a lot of application forms, thousands of them, we're talking about. And thousands of application forms mean that this number will be more than the number of students in the community. So probably, parents favor these popular schools, and sometimes these schools are not convenient at all. There are cases in Hong Kong Island and other districts as well. In the past, we saw that some parents from new territories would send their children to schools in Hong Kong Island. So for that very reason, when we estimate prospective students, for example, if we are going to estimate how many students from Shen Shipu District end up going to schools in Shen Shipu District, or how many students from other districts will study in Shen Shipu District? According to past statistics, or we can ask the schools in that particular district because they have a better grasp of the numbers of students every year. With the convenient transport network, we are bound to face these challenges. But as Education Bureau, we hope that we can have a better grasp of these numbers so we can spend the money properly, and this is also in line with the principle of value for money, and we hope that we can do a better job in this regard. And after this meeting, we will talk with our colleagues in thinking about how to do the job better. Thank you, Under Secretary. I think Mister Tom was asking about the mechanism issue. I suggest that the Education Panel arrange meetings with the Education Bureau in thinking about the future mechanisms. Next is Professor Lo Chi Pan.
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the re-provisioning of the school in Shen Shipu, this issue has been discussed for many times at the Finance Committee. Many members have voiced the concerns. Well, I'd like to raise an issue that some of you may deem improper. As for the re-provisioning of this school, I think is very necessary. And Federation of Education Workers has voiced our concern. I think the Education Bureau can think about this. When this decision is endorsed today, this school will be re-provisioned, and then it will be rebuilt. In this process, we need to think about the problem of allocating school places across districts in Hong Kong, which is a long-term issue. And that also relates to the rebuilding of some aging school premises. Well, these schools will be rebuilt, but in the future, as Mister Deng Fei said, probably these new schools will end up having no enough students. So this district will not have enough school places. Then how we solve the problem? So we need to take a very particular and meticulous approach. So are we doing the same thing in the future? I can probably request that the Education Bureau look at this issue, the re-provisioning of this particular school, and then and then start a program to look into what the proper approach is in the future. And this relates to the spending of four hundred million. We don't think that the four hundred million dollars should be spent on a school premise that will be vacated in the future. And if there are schools that are waiting for spaces, we hope that we can offer to them. Otherwise, we're moving schools again and again, and then we have a longer waiting list of school premises that are vacated because we're talking about the flowing population. And when these new schools are rebuilt, how can we make sure that the students can move to the right school? This school will have our grant, but we should start from this school and think about the long-term issues. Thank you. Any comments, Under Secretary?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Professor Lau, for the comments. In the past, there were precedents for re-provisioning of schools to a different district. For example, in Kai Tech Development Area, there were schools coming from other districts, moving into this new area. Especially in recent years, there were other examples, like Anderson Road, this new development area. There were new schools moving into this new development area. And that's because of the new increased population in this area and the higher number of public housing. So we see that in recent years, in the newly built schools, when it comes to enrollment, there were no concerns as the members were talking about. But going forward, Hong Kong will be faced with the demographic challenges. There will be structural population decrease and to some districts, to particular, to some particular schools. This is a problem, and this is also a problem across the board that is affecting every night school in Hong Kong. So faced with the decreasing population, the Education Bureau will spare no efforts in thinking of ways to have exchanges with the education sector. Of course, as for this very project, going forward, we will pay attention to its enrollment in the future. The member also mentioned the new development programs in the future, including the Northern Metropolis. Yes, exactly, we were faced with a huge new population. But can we simply build no schools in the new area and move the schools from other districts to the new development area? I don't think this is the right approach for us to tackling the problems, especially with the new students in the new development areas. Well, as I said in my response to Member Yang Wen Kit's question, we believe that we will give it a thought to the re-provisioning issue and think about other ways in the future. Members have asked about the mechanism in the future. In the future, there will be new districts, population increase, and demographic changes. So there are serious issues the members all agreed that we should discuss with Education Bureau in solving the questions in the future. We believe we can follow up on this issue with the new chairman of this committee in the new legislative year. Next, Mister Le Tong Kock.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with the summary made by the chairman and the interventions of other members. Although we're deliberating this particular project, but it comes from the problem of re-provisioning new premises. The representatives from the Education Bureau made their comments, a lot of them, but I think they're just beating the bush, and they haven't seriously told this council and this committee whether they would do anything and how they would do it. In their response to Mister Professor Lo Chi Pan, they said we will come back In their response to Mr. Professor Lo Chi-Pang, they said we will come back and look at this issue. Is that a serious attitude? Is that the serious attitude that is worthy here in looking at this serious problem of education sector? Education is an extremely important and secret issue. And I think as the central government always say, this is a lofty mission and this is a heavy task. Can we please spend all of our efforts and spare no effort wholeheartedly to solve this issue? I hope we can have some clear response from the Undersecretary.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Mr. Li for your question. I can assure members that we really take our work very seriously. Regarding relocation of schools to another district, I think this policy is not totally worthless. There are, you know, pros and cons. There are good aspects of this policy. For example, we can rationalize the, you know, supply and demand imbalance between different districts. Using the present example, in Kuicheng, there is a surplus of school places. And in Kuicheng, the whole district has already implemented small class teaching in the primary schools. Whereas in Net Forty, Shanshui Pole, they have not yet fully implemented small class teaching because there are not enough classrooms. And there is also a keen demand for school places. In the past few years, we've seen that we need to, you know, you know, we seem that there is a shortage of small places and therefore we need to increase the number of students per class. So moving a school from another district to Net Forty in Shanshui Pole, other than actually, you know, addressing the imbalance in supply and demand of small places, it will also help facilitate this whole district to implement small class teaching among all its small primary schools. So the policy, it's not that we have not fully considered the various factors before we launch this policy. But we understand members' concern and your, the concerns you've expressed regarding cross-district relocation. Although we had, you know, widespread support from the primary schools before, when it come up, comes to cross-district relocation, whether it's the Association of Headmasters of aged primary schools, when we launched the policy, we had the support. But the condition nowadays have changed. And going forward, how we should proceed, we are willing to go back and review the situation. In some districts, we cannot implement in situ relocation because there is no space. If we totally give up the policy of cross-district relocation, then in future, there will be some districts where we can't have relocation. No matter how old and dilapidated it is, they can only, there is only option of in situ, you know, reconstruction. If we cannot do that, then it will not be possible for that school to improve its school environment. So all these considerations and the points I make, we will certainly consider them, you know, thoroughly. Mr. Li, I think the Undersecretary said a lot of things, but he's not answered my question. I only have one humble request. First of all, the Undersecretary should, you know, guarantee to this committee that whether they have, you know, roadmap and a timetable. Undersecretary? We will, well, after our discussion of this item today, we will go back and immediately conduct a review so that in future, whether we will continue to, you know, implement the cross-district relocation. Mr. Li is asking that you should sit down and have a discussion with the education sector. Would you promise to do that? Chairman, we can immediately arrange to have a meeting with the, you know, stakeholders in the primary schools. Okay, that would be a commitment.
Ms. Lillian Quo, thank you. The Undersecretary said that you are willing to talk to the education sector, but regarding allocation of school buildings, I think there is not enough transparency regarding the committee on the allocation of school places. So this year, I think we've already approved, you know, funding of three billion dollars. Different schools have put forward the needs, aspirations. I think the the mechanism works, but now should we maintain the still, you know, membership of, on the committee? There should be an increase in the number of unofficial members so that you can listen to the views of the people from the district. But you should also incorporate the voices of people who represent the education sector, rather than people who work in research institutes or people in charge of mental health institutions or people from the wholesale retail industry because they simply don't understand the needs of the education sector. In the school places allocation committee, they will only make a preliminary assessment, they will read the papers and, and some, you know, report, consulting reports, but they don't really know how to read those reports. Of course, we need to listen to different voice views. I hope the Bureau undertake to do this. When you review the mechanism for school allocation, would you also review the composition of the committee on allocation of school places? Whether you would seriously, you know, consider to do that? Undersecretary?
Thank you Madam Quo. Regarding your point concerning the composition of the school place, uh, school place allocation committee and, you know, increasing the number of non-officials on that committee and also recruiting more members from the education sector to sit on that committee. Indeed, this can help reflect the views of the people in the education sector. I would also concur with what you've suggested. We certainly consider how we can follow up on that. Perhaps the PS can also supplement. Thank you. Please, you know, speak into the microphone. Regarding the school places allocation committee and the members' suggestion, we will certainly go back and seriously consider the question of the appointment of unofficial members to see what we can do to enhance the, the to make sure that the school allocation exercise is more fair. Also like to remind members the role of the official members on the committee. These are actually directorate staff at the Education Bureau and they really know about the, the, the education and they know about all the school sponsoring bodies. So in making the assessment, they can make, you know, very important contributions. Whereas for the unofficial members, what is their role? Some members already said it very well, that is, education is a sacred, you know, task. And the school is a place where we will nurture our future talents. So we will not just consider the schools, the performance check record of the school sponsoring body. We've also looked at the vision and vision, the organizational structure and also in the proposals they put forward, whether they have specific, you know, proposals. The role of the unofficial members is to look at those proposals and decide whether or not the proposals can really be implemented, how feasible it is. Many schools, whether the schools have a contribution to their own community. So there are track records that we can actually look at. So I think the views of the official and official members do complement each other. So we will not now, when the school move into a new campus, we want to ensure the public funds are used properly. So, so we will actually make our decision carefully so that in a new building location, they will be able to recruit, you know, the number of students they want. Starry Lee, regarding this matchbox, you know, school buildings and the fact that they can be quickly relocated to the new building so that there is more space for the students, I don't think anybody would object to that. The controversy now, as I said at the last meeting, is the relocation of school buildings across different districts. Especially given the fact that the student population is drastically falling. I thank the Undersecretary to this morning, I arranged for a meeting with the Association of Headmasters in Kowloon City. The, the association, that association had expressed a dissatisfaction with the allocation of school buildings. And but we didn't, we didn't have a time to express our concerns at that meeting. Now overall, they believe that they're saying that there is not enough communication between the Bureau and them themselves. And like Mr. Tang said, I think your projection may not reflect the actual situation. And thirdly, the allocation of school buildings, you, you, they are not satisfied that you do not consider, you know, relocation in the same district. And fourthly, they would like you to really implement a policy of small class teaching. I hope the Bureau will make a public commitment. That is, in terms of allocation of school building, there is a need for review. Other than the question, the composition, I think there should be, you know, extra, you know, credit or points to be added for in situ relocation. I think parents would find that more reasonable. So that should be considered in the scoring exercise. And secondly, interaction within the community. Many of our members would encourage the schools to open the facilities to the public, especially the recreational facilities. I think this should be considered in the school building allocation exercise. So I think you should also review the scoring mechanism. And secondly, statistics. The Association of Headmasters said that in Kowloon City, the city is rapidly redeveloping and they say that your figures have not really reflected that new situation. Perhaps the Education Bureau can consider how you can convince the education sector to accept your projection, which really can reflect the, the, the student admissions exercise. With the rapid decline in student population, I think you need to discuss thoroughly with the education sector on the subject of cross-district relocation. Because we need to, you know, address the concern. I hope you could make a commitment here. Thirdly, regarding the promotion of small class teaching in primary schools and the timetable for that. In Shanshui Pole in Kowloon City, you've not really implemented that policy yet. But now that we have room for you to implement that policy, I think you can now progressively implement small class teaching in all districts. Serious questions for you, Undersecretary? Regarding the school allocation exercise and the scoring mechanism, I'll ask the PS to answer that. Just now, I've already undertaken to lays with the education sector regarding cross-border relocation. I think we will not first discuss from which district we will locate the school to another one, which is first address the principle about this policy. Moving a school from one district to another district, people may have some preconceived ideas. The district from which the school will be relocated, relocated will increase competition in the, in that district. So what is the view of the education sector regarding that? I will certainly consult with the, with the education sector. Regarding the number of figures, I've already answered Mr. Tang's question. Regarding small class teaching, that is an established policy. As we said in the council meeting early this month, several members have stressed that we should implement small class teaching in a more comprehensive manner. We've heard that and we will continue to expedite the process. The PS can perhaps supplement.
Simply put, in the scoring system, when the school is moving to a new premise, we've looked at different conditions that has to adapt it to. Simply put, if the school is suitable for in situ redevelopment, that's better because the students would not have to travel long to a new district and they're familiar with the surroundings. Well, if they will move to a new district, then there must be some attractive things in the new district that entice them to, to go to a new district. Next, Mr. Andrew Lam. Please, please turn on the mic for Mr. Andrew Lam.
Thank you Chairman. Well, I've been following the discussion for long, but I haven't heard that any colleague opposed the idea of re-provisioning a school in a different district. But I've been following up this discussion. However, I think the response from the officials is simply following the old approach because it's effective. If, if the mechanism is very effective and has been effective, why does it lead to such a big controversy? If the system has been running for long, however, there are outcry from this education sector and other sectors, then why not giving it a serious thought and have a review of the system? Why don't we talk with the education sector and discuss the problem and then think about a new approach? If the education sector doesn't understand, can we explain to them? Otherwise, this topic will be discussed again. Let me not talk about the new environment in Northern District. Would there be a new plan to be made available for discussion? And when should this topic be discussed in relevant panels and committees with the members concerned? Well, I think we really need to give it some serious thought. If we don't have a clearer promise, if we don't make a commitment today, even if this proposal is endorsed today, we will meet difficulties in the future. Thank you Chairman. I think we're repeating the same issue again and again. Undersecretor promised that we'll have a review. I'm sure you all know that given the new environment, many schools have new ideas. I think, Mr. Lam, the Education Bureau promised that they will have a review. Should they repeat their answer? Well, it's better if they do so. Undersecretary?
Thank you Chairman, I promise that we will have a review. Well, I would say in 2019, after several schools were re-provisioned, the new premises will need some time for designing and other things. Members have asked about how we can work with the schools. Yes, we need to work with these schools on designing new premises, premises and their future arrangement. The members said rightly that we need to make use of the resources of the government before we try to solicit the support from members at this Legislative Council. Well, regarding the number of school age students and population in different districts, there are some changes compared with three years ago. But we've repeatedly said that when it comes to opening new schools, we need to help the practice of small class teaching in school network forty, Shenshui Pole District. Going forward, we will discuss with the education sector on that. A number of years ago, we had exchanges with them when we were promoting this school, small class teaching. Well, regarding on provisioning, we've talked with the Association of Headmasters and the Association
we've talked with, uh, uh, the Association of Headmasters and the Association of, uh, Government Funded Schools. I think most headmasters have supported our work, but with situation changing, uh, we will continue to talk with them and see if another review is needed. Next, Mr. Su Ka-Fei, the first round.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to ask a question to, uh, Ms. Wendy Leng, Deputy Secretary. We've been hearing the discussion for over fifty minutes. Last Friday, we had a discussion of around forty minutes. At the new legislative year, given the number of members, uh, we would, we would not join every committee. Uh, for example, my party does not join, uh, P W S C, um, Established Committee and Education Panel. So sometimes I have to rely on my colleagues, uh, to relay our comments. If this proposal, um, had a good discussion at P W S C, then we would not, uh, talk about it again at this Finance Committee. Last, last week, I, I voiced my comments, but why again? Because, uh, uh, Mr. Hau Kei-Ming, uh, my colleague, uh, said he received a lot of letters from principals because, uh, they're on, uh, tinder hooks and, uh, they were worried about, uh, having not enough students. So should we consult the, uh, principals now or should we, um, have done it before? Now, the schools have not received enough students and the schools are worried that their resources and their schools, uh, in themselves, uh, were not be able to be retained. So you have to retain, you have to consult this, the headmasters. And I come from the retail industry and have to voice my concerns as well. I think we should have adequate discussion, no problem. But why, um, am I taking the floor the second time? Last week, at the end of the meeting, I spent two minutes and a half, uh, and the meeting was closed, so I didn't ask for an answer. And after that, there were four members requesting to speak. Most of them said, uh, most of them, um, could be given the floor. But, uh, at the end, uh, Ms. Lillian Kock, uh, was still wishing to speak. I don't think it's a problem. Uh, she comes from, uh, uh, D A B and Mr. Chen Wing Kong, uh, from, comes from D A B as well. Uh, this is the largest political party in Hong Kong. And we can use up the five minutes. Last week, at the very end, there were eight topics, uh, three of them, uh, needed discussion at the end of Finance Committee. And, uh, should not the members ask questions? This week, we don't have many meetings. Last week, at the end of the Finance Committee, a lot of, uh, colleagues were not in Hong Kong. And, uh, the, some, some people went for body checks, uh, for, they went for business and, and they, uh, were planning for travel, but now they changed their, uh, uh, air flights and come back for this meeting. So why insisting, uh, endorsing this proposal in this particular meeting? Why today?
Undersecretary. Well, I'm asking the question to Deputy Secretary. Why so, in such a hurry? Thank you. Basically, if the schools received funding, uh, the redevelopment project can start as soon as possible. We hope that this school premises can be, uh, making some fast progress. For example, if it's postponed for one month, then the schools can only start the school year one year later. After the Christmas, we will have a new year and then we will have a House Committee and Finance Committee. It, it's only less than one month away. Why, why should we wait for that? We thank all the members present here today. Well, I'm asking why in such a hurry? You know, a lot of members. Well, Chairman, let me answer the question from, uh, Mr. Su Ka-Fei first. Well, time is up, but I think Mr. Su Ka-Fei said that, uh, uh, what he means is that the Legislative Council is not a, a rubber stamp and don't expect every proposal to be endorsed so easily. Next, uh, Mr. Chu Gok Kao.
Thank you, Chairman. I think, uh, what Undersecretary just said was a bit misleading. He talked about re-provisioning and said it was supported by the education sector, uh, like the, uh, Association of Headmasters and, uh, Government Funded Schools. Uh, this support came from a long time ago, actually, but now the situation has changed. Uh, we have less students. And I don't think this, this council of, uh, uh, primary schools with the Association of Headmasters can be representative of the opinions of all education sector. Um, now the situation is that with less student numbers, um, everything is different. Uh, what was possible that time is not available now. The Bureau should change its policy. It should not stick its old policies. The schools are concerned with, uh, less student numbers and they are worried about, uh, possible school closures. What did the Education Bureau do? Uh, if the situation is that we have adequate prospective students like the Undersecretary said, then there won't be, uh, these opinions. In a word, we should practice, uh, small class teaching across the board and the Education Bureau is not, uh, moving fast enough. In different districts, uh, there are problems in estimating prospective students and allocating school places. We should have some reform, uh, and improvement. Otherwise, uh, the soft landing that they're talking about is just a hard approach in school closure, uh, hurting the schools. I think Mr. Ko was still talking about the mechanism problem. It has been mentioned a few times. If Undersecretary has further comments, please be very brief.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I don't have any further comments. But faced with structural decrease of our population, we take an approach what we call soft landing. The government has repeatedly said we can combine schools, we can re-provision schools in a different district. And if the schools are expecting less student resources, we can move the schools to a new development district. And this was talked about before and this was exactly tackling the problem in a soft landing approach. Some schools expect less students. If there were no possible destinations, then all these schools would have to be, uh, redeveloped in situ. I don't think it's enough in solving, uh, the issue of inadequate prospective students. But I heard the feedback and we will come back for a review. In this district, there's a new approach and, uh, the same approach of re-provisioning is applied. I hope that the, uh, Education Bureau will give it some serious thought and prevent the, uh, the, the thing from happening again. But this matter, uh, started in twenty nineteen, but in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-one, the social, uh, environment has changed and everything has changed. So we should give it a review. The Undersecretary promised that, uh, they would follow up on this issue in the, uh, Education Panel. Uh, Ms. Lillian Kock.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a big concern for many members and I support the Bureau to give it a serious thought to re-, uh, reallocating, uh, the school places. I believe the Education Bureau must have more exchanges with the education sector. You said you consulted many headmasters. But in twenty ten, uh, and in twenty eleven, these consultations happened, but they were ten years ago. Should we not strengthen communication? And the Education Bureau has the two Directorate, uh, positions and you promised that you would give it the ser- serious thought. Uh, I hope that you can honor your promise so our education sector can have a real soft landing. And in the beginning, you mentioned excellent schools. Well, let me raise another point. You mentioned that, um, uh, these schools can be redeveloped in situ. But other than that, I hope that the schools can be outstanding schools. I hope they can support other schools in this very district. So its specialties can boost the development of education in that district. So the schools in this district can develop with, uh, this good school together. But thirdly, we're talking about the school premises. And this is a, a matchbox school, but over three decades, some, uh, matchbox schools have seventy years of history and they're applying to the Bureau in optimizing the facilities in the school. And in, um, downtown, there are schools that have only three, uh, story building, um, used for auditorium, um, uh, speech therapy rooms. They don't have a playground where they have activities. They have to rent the playground, public background, and they're even worse than matchbox schools. Should we not think about this problem? Should we not look into them? For many years, we didn't see that the Education Bureau, um, uh, took any approach to help these schools.
Fourthly, you answered the same question at the Education Panel meeting regarding students who need to travel across different districts. The schools can arrange for school buses to take the students to go to the new building. But in your paper, you're telling us that for most of the students who, uh, make use of public transport going to the new school building. So if you go to, you know, uh, Chengi City, uh, it would take half an hour. Without school buses, it's not going to be convenient. But when asked, when, what you told the schools and the parents, you said there will be arrangements for school, school buses, but now we, we understand that there won't be any school buses. I think time is up. Why don't you, you know, you know, you know, ask your other questions in your next round? Mister Le Chen Kung, your first round.
Thank you. I think the birth rate in Hong Kong was ninety thousand and now it's down to thirty thousand per annum. The decline is really shocking together with the immigration wave. Many schools are worried that they will not be able to admit sufficient students and the schools would need to be closed. Especially if, uh, many of our colleagues from the education sector has made the same point. I think this is due to the fact that we don't have a population policy. Why is it that even now the government has not, you know, implemented a population policy? So, education is, you know, a, a tool for us to nurture our future talents. But in Hong Kong, the situation now is that there are, for example, you know, vacancies which are not filled and others who are unemployed. Shouldn't the Education Bureau consider this? They say that they will actually, you know, uh, uh, promote, you know, professional teachers. But do you have a comprehensive plan regarding relocation of schools? Uh, have you considered how you're going to build this, you know, uh, you know, specialized, you know, uh, uh, schools? We don't have many of these subjects in the secondary schools and there are no vocational, you know, courses like design, I T and, you know, maintenance. So how can you expect the students to, you know, find a job upon graduation? And how can you actually, you know, enhance the status of vocational and technical education? And I, including how you can change the perception of parents regarding, uh, V P E T education. Mister Lee, I think these are matters relating to policies, uh, should, uh, should be dealt with at, at the panel meetings. But perhaps the, uh, Undersecretary could also reply.
I'd like to thank Mr. Lee for his comments regarding, uh, uh, vocational and technical education. In the policy address this year, regarding V P E T education, many new measures have been, uh, announced. For example, we have some pilot projects regarding, you know, you know, uh, you know, degree courses on applied sciences. These are being launched at four universities and we're now reviewing the effectiveness of that. Going forward, we will consider we can further extend that project. Regarding the, uh, sub-degree courses and the review of those courses, at the Education Panel meeting early next year, we will be providing an update for members. As for the further promotion of vocational and technical education, well, this year, uh, marks the fortieth anniversary of the, uh, of the, uh, Vocational and Teaching Company, V T C. And in a large scale expo, they've also launched, you know, uh, their programs. How can we actually connect the education and the, and the industrial sector? And how at the secondary school stage, we can expose students to, uh, you, you know, the workplace and so on? We are actually continuing to, to do that. In, most importantly, we should, you know, change the image of vocational and technical education and, and that we should, you know, ensure that there is a parallel or parity between traditional education and V P E T education. Chairman, I used to, I was the former Kuicheng District Councilor. Some members ask question why we cannot have relocation within the same district. Honestly, we don't have, you know, s- s- any space in Kuicheng. Even if there is space, we can use only them for constructing, you know, uh, uh, other buildings and not a primary or secondary school. In the part, uh, one, we have a Singkong Way Primary School which was, uh, relocated to Changhang Estate and has its name changed. Uh, there's one example of in situ relocation, that is the Shaclay Catholic Primary School. Its campus is right next to a secondary school and that secondary school had to be relocated and that's how, uh, they're able to have in situ reconstruction or, or relocation. In Hong Kong, i- if you want to have re- in situ relocation is difficult unless you have a lot of money like, uh, the, the Da Sis and Girl Schools. They can have in situ reconstruction. To resolve this problem, they needed to borrow school premises in Shang'anou during the reconstruction period. Many colleagues and even the Bureau said that we should go for small class teaching. But let us not forget that in many districts, they have yet to implement small class teaching, especially it for Net forty-four and Net forty with many prestigious schools. They have actually over admission of students with more than forty-five students per class. For these schools, they can only have thirty students and they can actually admit eight more. I think this is going to be hard on the teachers. I used to be a teacher in a secondary school, uh, typical class with a thirty-eight students, but in some cases, a class can accommodate forty-six, which means that students will not get sufficient attention from the teachers and it's not fair for the teachers either. They need to put in extra time and effort, uh, to, uh, make the lesson plans, to mark the homework and so on. Now, if we could increase the number of schools in these districts where there is, uh, a large number of student population, then we can actually, you know, expedite small class teaching, benefiting students and parents. Now, for this school in Chengi, we shouldn't talk about relocation from Wan Tai Sin to Kai Tech. I've also been in touch with two, uh, there are two Headmasters Association in Kuicheng, one for Kuicheng and one for Chengi. I've talked to the Chairman of both associations and they both agree with the proposed relocation. But why is it that when some schools encounter this problem, I think, s- s- primary school headmasters are very timid? Uh, they only want more resources so that they can put in the effort to improve, uh, the performance of the school. They've never thought that relocation was a political issue. The Education Bureau said that the council of aided primary and secondary schools. Let us not forget that not all primary schools actually join tho- those associations. If that, they only have abroad policies. For government schools, when, you know, vested interests are concerned, uh, they cannot usually represent the sector. There's also a lot of conversation among the primary schools. So, uh, before they go off for relocation, they must first consult the students and parents. Without their support, they will not go for relocation. Uh this time, I don't think was a target against this particular school because it would adversely affect the future development. Uh we can see without an advert have an adverse impact on the development of this school. Thank you. I note that three other members are in the queue. Uh some members are going going for the second and third round. I note that members are not have kept repeating, you know, matters relating to policy issues. So I suggest that after these three members have spoken, I shall proceed to uh the poll. I think any further deliberation should be needed uh done at the panel meeting. Mister Tang Fei, it's not really a policy matter I'd like to bring up. I believe many members, I dare not say everyone, uh even myself and members of the Federation of Educated Workers. Now I think we're in a dilemma. If we veto this project because the policy considerations are not thorough. And a school with a matchbox, you know, building will have to stay put and cannot move to a newer campus. Eventually, the students would suffer. So if you ask us to vote against this proposal, we simply cannot do that. But to ask us, if you ask us to support this proposal, it is tantamount for to our. To the fact that the, you know, school allocation exercise and the mechanism for calculating small places. Uh you are in fact asking us to support these mechanisms which are not reasonable. So I'd like to state my position that I shall be abstaining from the vote. Because we don't want to, you know, obstruct a school from, you know, moving out of a matchbox campus. But I hope the Bureau can really implement the various, you know, roadmaps and come up with a timetable. Uh to review the mechanism for allocating school buildings and places. I think we've all expressed our dissatisfaction with the current mechanism and also the process of consultation. So even if you support a pro- project today, it doesn't mean that you are supporting the the approach that the Bureau is uh taking. Mister Shu Ka-Fei, your third round. I shall stop after this round. I think the lesson we've learned today is that the most important stakeholder are the schools. They they don't have the opportunity to fully express their views and we have to come back to this council to express such their concerns. I don't think you can impose your decision on others. And secondly, you are arranging for this item to be the last item on our last meeting of the year. Have you considered that we may not be able to finish with a deliberation? And if not, have you talked to our clerk? That is, if you cannot finish our deliberation uh on this item, then we should be prepared that we should reserve more time for more discussion. Have you considered that? Uh it shouldn't be the case that you simply force us to 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 express our support and approve this project. Have you talked to our president? Because we are not rubber stamped, we are not obliged to support you each and every time. This is a matter concerning education. Of course, we would like to have new school buil- buildings if the schools are short of space. Uh we should support the proposed relocation, but you have to consider the reality. So many people are now emigrating, many schools are complaining they cannot admit enough schools. And if they don't recruit enough students, the school will be closed down. You have to consider concern instead of telling us just to endorse the uh the project. Chairman, this is just an opinion, I don't expect any answer. Like Mister Tang, I will not be taking part in the vote. Miss Lillian Cook, your fourth round, thank you. I think we have no strong views regarding relocation. We don't object to promoting the development of education. We've never said that we are against the project, but like I said. You're forcing us to support your project today, you've not undertaken a a proper review. Uh for Sam Chipo and Kao Loon, you're telling them that you will listen to the views. I think you should reflect on what you've done. Now, I when the project is approved, I don't want to see more problems arising from that like transport issue. Are you confident that you can a- address all the related issues arising from the relocation of the school? We don't want our students to suffer, that is the most important. Thank you. Bureau, any brief response?
Or perhaps I can respond to what Lillian Cook said in her earlier questions. When it comes to exchanges with the education sector, the schools. And the Association of School Heads. And very soon, uh with the schools in question, we will have such exchanges. In the future, and if anything can be improved, uh we will improve them. Members also asked about how we can promote um these specialties of some uh new schools in the redevelopment plans. We will encourage uh the. New schools to have more exchanges with the schools uh in this uh district. Uh we will encourage them to share experiences. I agree with what Lillian said about the purpose of education um is to serve the benefits of students. And the very existence of schools is there for students' benefits. So we will maximize the benefit of students and we will improve the learning environment of schools. We will help uh students study better, uh we will spare no efforts in doing these jobs.
Thank you, Under Secretary. I believe after two meetings, the Education Bureau has heard very well. Uh this uh questions and issues, uh for example insufficient consultation, uh etcetera. I have to defer this discussion to uh this very committee in the le- next legislative year. And now we will put this proposal to the vote. Uh now we will put this to a vote, F C R twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, sixty-seven, uh to the vote. Those who are in favor, please raise their hands. Thank you. Those against, please raise their hands. Abstain, please raise their hands. Sorry, uh the secretary said we should not ask for abstentions, but everybody is clear on that. We believe that most of the majority of members um are in favor of this proposal. I declared this uh proposal endorsed, I declared the meeting adjourned. Uh thank you very much for your attendance.